Okay, we are on the end.
Bring the meeting of the Township of Long Hill Planning Board to order. This is the March 12th meeting. We're opening the meeting at 7:36. Could I please have the announcements?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting or hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting or hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 p.m. at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, and that is all, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Deputy Mayor Lavender is currently absent. Committee man Ray?
Present.
Ms. Dill is excused this evening. Mr. Hans is excused this evening. Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. Opalka?
Here.
Mr. Sandow?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones is excused this evening. Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is some of the meeting minutes. I turn your attention to the January 23rd, 2024. Are there any comments, corrections, suggested edits, et cetera?
Mr. Opalka?
When are we talking about?
Uh, we're on January 23rd.
This was the reorganization meeting on January 23rd.
Yes. Section eight, the election of a chairman, refers to Chairman Richardson as vice chairman. So vice just needs to come out in that paragraph twice.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, please.
I am disturbed by paragraph 10, which says the board took the following actions by unanimous votes of the members present. It was not unanimous.
You're right.
I voted negative on one of these.
Which I did note in item number two, so I would-
It is noted, but the word unanimous is what jumps out at you in the top paragraph.
I will remove the word unanimous. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Okay. Any additional? I'll give you a second. Do I have a motion to accept?
Still moved.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I turn your attention to the February 27th meeting minutes. Give you a second to read through. I'll give it a little extra time. Sorry for the delay in getting these, the materials out to everyone at a late date. Need to get these out a little bit sooner. Please get a motion to adopt.
Nope. Still moved.
Motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please note the one abstention, Deb.
I'm sorry?
You have one abstention.
Oh, tonight, yes.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda, under resolutions, will be the colon, application number 23-10P. If we could please have any questions or comments on that resolution, assuming you've had a chance to read through that.
Deb, you have the list of who's eligible to vote on the adoption of this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Pull it open. I think-
I think I'm the only one who, I wasn't at the meeting.
Right, only Brennan is the only one here that's not eligible.
And it was unanimous, so everyone else is qualified to vote.
Correct.
Deb, on page seven, the second paragraph, the 27th day of March, I think it should be February.
I knew there was one I missed. Oh, wait, on this day, the 27th.
Shouldn't it match the paragraph above?
Oh, yeah, it's the, that should be the hearing date on that page.
Right.
Yeah. Right, Chris?
Wait, which paragraph are you referring to?
It's, it should be now therefore be it resolved on the 27th-
That would be today's date.
-day of February.
No, that would be the preceding paragraph, whereas the board took action on this application at its meeting on February 27, 2024.
So it should be today's date?
Yeah, the paragraph now therefore, or should it, now therefore be it resolved on this, let's say, the 11th of March?
The 12th.
Yeah, whatever today's date is, yes. Sorry.
Okay, got it.
On page seven, paragraph 26, requires a period at the end.
Twenty six, um-
Where?
What section on page seven?
Mr. Sandow, are you looking at the colon?
No, the 26.
We're not doing the Portera one. Are you looking at Portera? Because we're doing Cologne first.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at Porture. Isn't that what's on the agenda?
No, well, we, we switched it up. We're keeping everybody guessing tonight, so we're doing Cologne.
Oh, well, this one I haven't seen yet because I didn't, was not on any distribution
That must mean time's up.
It's like jeopardy. Wasn't there a condition brought up by our engineer that said monuments would be set at the new lot lines?
I could have sworn I included something like that.
I don't see it in here, but I-
I do recall that.
Remember the term monument. Representations. Oh, condition two, two. Number two, Roman numeral two. The applicant shall comply with the comments set forth in Board Engineer Voight's memorandum. I think that would encompass that.
Why don't we add though, including but not limited to-
Right.
-and have that specific condition since it's a concern of the boards.
Right.
So we can hit that. If the board so desires.
That was agreed to.
Would that be more appropriate in, in a section four? Or where are you talking about making that amendment?
In condition two, sub-two, referencing compliance with everything in the engineer's memo.
Gotcha.
If it was in his memo, then including but not limited to, and I'm sorry, that was monuments.
Set along the new property line.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and we'll, we'll use the exact language from the engineer's memo.
I am very confused on page three.
Whereas, number one, the paragraph starts Mr. Zelli. What makes it confusing is that that paragraph starts out by talking a, about a shed which spans the lot line between lots 21 and 22, and then all of a sudden I find myself in the 1994 approval of a subdivision of old lot six, all within the same paragraph, and I'm wondering if there isn't a more concise and clear way of indicating that those are two separate issues. I mean, after all, we take a separate paragraph to announce that Mr. Hollis was duly sworn. Why can't we make these major points of our approval separate paragraphs?
Is there anything substantively wrong? I get what you're saying, Mr. Sandow, about separating them, but is there anything inaccurate?
We're taking nine pages to write up this resolution. There is no intent here to be brief and concise, so as long as we're-
Oh. Mr. Sandow, I'm sorry to interject. If I could explain, you know, my thought process in drafting that paragraph, it was to kind of keep all of Mr. Zelli's representations organized into a single paragraph. That being said, I don't necessarily see a reason why we couldn't revise it to put that as a separate paragraph. But just to understand where I was coming from and the idea that-
It is extremely confusing, and 30 years from now, when somebody dredges out this resolution for the next action on these lots, they may be confused also as to why this reference to the 1994 approval is the second part of a paragraph that has nothing to do with the 1994 approval.
I think, if I may, I think it helps with the whereas clauses on page two, setting forth the fact that there's adjacent lots and a prior approval dealing with lot 602, and how that's being modified in this approval because it has a restriction on further subdivisions, which is what comes into play along with the lot line adjustment. So I think that helps, but again, that said, we can break up the subject paragraph into multiple paragraphs if we, whatever the board's desire, so long as it remains accurate.
Does anybody feel strongly to not break that up? I think that's fine.
For clarification's sake, it's probably best to break it up. I mean, the condition, number one, is clear.
Yep.
So it would be sub-statements in their Roman numerals three and four that would constitute the wrong paragraph? I think that's the direction you guys want to go in?
Split those two. Right, Mr. Sandow, we're splitting items two, or three and four in that paragraph out. I think that-
I stand by my comment. It's confusing to me now, and it will be even more confusing to future generations.
So if the board wishes to break that out into two paragraphs, we can, we can do so at points three and four, and we could just simply say, Mr. Zelli represented that, and we have one and two, and then we could say, Mr. Zelli-
Represented.
Further represented that, and sub-three and four will become number, sub-one and two into paragraph two.
Yep.
For those who are keeping score. And then we could have, pick up with paragraph three. And Chris can get, the board can still vote, obviously.
Yeah.
The, the, the language, or what I just said, will be reflected in something that'll come to the board tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I see that we're talking about the same issue at number 17 on page six. Perhaps there's a way of merging these across the four pages so that everything that has to do with the 1994 approval is in one place. I'm sorry if that seems to be too orderly for us to cope with.
Is that, that's number 17 you're referring to on page six?
Yes, number 17 talks about the conditions of no further subdivision. Not only that, the wording on page three, now that I read it, says that it was Mr. Zelli's about the intent of the prohibition in the 1994 approval. That almost sounds like testimony to me.
It was a representation.
Which he made during the hearing.
Right.
Say again?
It would be technically, if it was the attorney, it would have been a representation, not testimony, Mr. Sandow.
Yeah, but, but certainly, the board didn't take his understanding to be a fact.
Right.
The board made its own separate and independent determination irrespective of what Mr. Zelli thought, so.
Well, Mr. Zelli was kind enough to pass out copies of the 1994 resolution, which were new business to the board at the time, and he took it upon himself to interpret the 1994 findings. Now, I'm not in a position to argue with his interpretation, it just sounded like he was adding something to the resolution that wasn't there. And again, you're going to have to excuse me because this is the first time I'm reading this because I didn't get a copy of it prior to the meeting.
I think what I would do is say, in that second paragraph that we're making now, instead of Mr. Zelli represented, which makes it sound a little too formal, if you will, he stated that, the following, and his understanding, he stated it, and it's worth whatever it's worth, if anything, but the board made its own independent determination.
It's his opinion on his interpretation.
Is the applicant's counsel allowed to offer opinions in the record?
Can certainly state what he understands or, or how he interprets something. He's in fact advocating, I guess, for a certain interpretation and asking that it be changed. But again, like anything, the board will make its own determination regardless of what the attorney, how the attorney interpreted on his client's behalf, the prior resolution.
While, while everyone's still digesting, if I could just hop in real quick. I, I did a word search on my, on my phone through the document. There's, the first comment that was brought, it was related to monumentation. There's two references to it. Page four, paragraph number six, and page two, the third whereas clause towards the end, there's references to the monumentation being, you know, one of the potential improvements. That's not to say it shouldn't also be included as a condition, but I'm just pointing out that it is referenced in other portions of the document.
Where were they again?
Page six, paragraph four, and page two, the third whereas clause. The, for the, I'm sorry, page four, paragraph six, it says, under sub-statement two, there are no improvements proposed to either subject lot except for meets and bounds monuments for purposes of effectuating the proposed subdivision. And then on page two, the third whereas clause, I'll just pop into the middle of that paragraph, and then within application, the applicants do not propose any improvements, regrading, or other physical alteration to either subject lot, save for the installation of monumentation for purposes of effectuating the proposed subdivision. And that, that statement itself, I know, was suggested by Mr. Sandow at the meeting. He wanted it to be very clear that they weren't proposing any improvements with the, with the application. Again, save for the monument signs, if they can really be classified as improvements.
Okay. Are we in a position that we, actually, I had one quick question on section three here on page three. Is that the correct spelling? Is it, is it really B-E-N-N in Andover, or just one N?
I, I looked on the tax records, it is two Ns.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I had the same thought, Mr. Richardson.
Great, nice, nice to get the applicant's names.
Right.
Hearing no further comments, is there a motion to adopt this resolution as amended?
Can we see the amendments in writing? Can we put this off to the next meeting? It seems to me that there's, there's enough floating around up in the air that we deserve to see a final version of it before we vote on it. I mean, it's not as if this is standing in the way of any substantial action by the applicant.
I suppose not, but I think the modifications were pretty straightforward. I mean, were there, is there any confusion as to what we're modifying?
I don't like to vote for things that I can't read in writing, especially considering the fact that I'm just seeing this now, and I'm not sure I have looked, seen everything that needs to be commented on.
Is there anybody else that's opposed to pushing this to the next meeting? Okay. Hearing that there's no one opposed to that, let's get the modified resolution out before our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
In time for us to read it before we show up at the meeting.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to the resolution for Mr. Michael Portera, application number I ask our board attorney to provide just a brief preamble as to this particular resolution, if you don't mind.
Certainly. No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just for the record and confirmation, Deb, I have the board members who are qualified to vote on this application, this resolution, as chairman, who are here this evening, as Chairman Richardson, committee man Ray, board member Malinowski, board member Opalka, and-
That's it.
That is it.
Correct.
Those four board members.
Correct.
So the board will recall that this matter was heard at a prior, two prior meetings ago, and the application was granted with conditions of approval. There's since been some discussion with regard to conditions, particularly two conditions. One was a condition with respect to dates and days and hours of operation. Another was a condition with respect to signage, and Chris has watched the videotape, as I understand it, at least twice, in full, slowed down, going through everything with timestamps and the like. What I'd like to do is address those two conditions, first starting with the second, because I think that might be less controversial of an issue. And the issue was a limitation, if any, having been either stipulated to by the applicant or imposed by the board on the signage. And as far as the signage is concerned, a couple of things. One, the board will recall that the home office ordinance actually has a provision that limits any signage, including the size of the signage, and it does so by reference to the permitted sign ordinance. So, second, in Chris's and my review of the record, and my recollection of the record having been here that evening, and my notes contemporaneously taken, there was not a stipulation, other than there was no intention by the applicant at the time to have a sign, but there was no imposition, stipulation by the applicant, or imposition by the board in its decision as to the size of the signage, which would lead me to conclude that the board's decision was that any signage would have to comply with the ordinance. What I am recommending be done with the resolution that was distributed is that we add a condition that we did not yet add. It is not to limit the size of the signage beyond that which it is limited in the ordinance, but to specifically reflect the fact that this, any signage must comply with the ordinance, and to spell out the ordinance provision, and to spell out specifically in the condition of approval, those limitations on the size of the signage as it appears in the ordinance. So when anybody's looking at this tomorrow, or a year, or 10 years, or 100 years from now, they see in the condition of approval, it, this limitation specifically spelled out, they don't have to go to the ordinance or wonder what the ordinance was at the time. So the proposed provision, or condition, excuse me, would be an additional condition. I would locate it at number seven on page eight, and renumber the others, and I would say that the applicant shall comply with all conditions of section 124.9 regarding home offices, open per end with the exception, to the extent relief is afforded from the off-street parking requirement in section 124.9D, which is the one the board determined he did not fully comply with, and therefore granted him relief therefrom. And then it would pick up, including, and these are the conditions that, excuse me, these are the provisions that he must comply with, including but not limited to the requirement set forth in section 124.9C prohibiting any signage except a single, and this is the exact language from the ordinance, except a single ground sign or wall sign indicating a permitted home office which shall not exceed four feet in height or four square feet in area. That way, as I stated, anybody looking at it knows exactly what the limitations are from the ordinance without having to look in the ordinance as to the signage. That is something that the applicant must comply with, notwithstanding the fact that the, the board could have addressed signage further in, in its decision.
So my only question there is, what if the ordinance changes in the future, and the signage is suddenly five feet, or five, or 10, or whatever? Is the applicant forever constrained to the four feet under that language? Because I'd rather, I mean, I don't have a problem with linking it to the ordinance, but I do have an issue, I think, with using that as a limitation. You know, it could be the ordinance as, as, you know, amended in the future, whatever, but, but-
But the inverse could be true as well.
Yeah, as I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
So it could get smaller, so-
Yeah, as I'm, as I was saying that, I was thinking of the, that, that suddenly became a pardon to me, but, I mean, even so, you know, nah.
I guess that's a-
Well, I'm sorry, good. I was gonna say, is it typical that when the signage would go up, let's say it's delayed two years, that you would do a retrospective, or be, if you don't take the action at the time, you have to abide by the rules at the time that you're actually doing the action? Seems more reasonable. Seems more reasonable. So it actually is...
It's essentially a grandfathering.
Right. But to the point, I think that it actually makes more sense to what Brendan was saying, that you do it to whatever the ordinance is at the time, rather than memorializing it now, just for consistency purposes.
Yeah, that, that, and that makes more sense, and I think it's fair, right, as well, yeah.
I mean, it could go positive, it could go negative, but at the time, that's kind of what the rules are. If there's a reason down the line that the rule changed, and all of a sudden you allow something that was okay in the past, but isn't in presently, that could open up a present that you don't want either.
Yeah. I mean, what's typical, now we're asking your opinion in regards to, really, what we're talking about is kind of grandfathering of a, of a particular provision. If an ordinance changes down the road, how is that supported by this resolution, or not?
Really, if there's a, if there's a material change in an ordinance after the time of approval, uh, the, if the applicant, if it's a change to the benefit of the applicant, uh, then, then they can be, in essence, grandfathered, and if it's to the detriment of the applicant, they would have to come back for further relief. So, the, um, but the board does have the authority, uh, to have conditions, including conditions, uh, that relate to, uh, deviations from the ordinance, uh, and, uh, so you do have the authority to impose a condition with specific restrictions, even if they may change in the future. You know, the ordinance may change in the future.
Okay.
So it, it's, um, what was the board's decision at the time? This is, the hearing is closed. Um, you are the board members here this evening who, who voted in favor of the application. What did you mean when you did it? That's the point of memorializing by resolution the decision.
I, I mean, I think the way I thought, at least, was, it was, it was, it was to comply with the ordinance, and right now it was four by four, but, but that was, but that was a, and, and, and so, um, I mean, I actually like your, your idea of whatever it is at the time that it goes, that it goes up, that's...
We can, we can put including but not limited to the requirements set forth in section one twenty-four point nine C regarding signage, uh, regarding any signage, comma, as, uh, as amended, period. And leave the specifics out. And then it requires someone to look at the ordinance, which is what someone should do anyway.
Right. I like that, that.
Okay. If that's the pleasure of the...
Or could you just reference the ordinance as of the date of this resolution?
Well, the date'll be in there, so, yeah.
The date's already...
Right, but then it would be, if the ordinance changes, it's still the, what's in effect now.
No, I'm being told that what's in effect at the time, what the signage is, is installed, is what the board wishes.
Because we, we weren't talking about that we had a definitive opinion as to sign as of the size.
Correct.
We, we didn't say that we felt that four feet was better. We said that in the last meeting when, uh, deputy mayor was talking about the eight by twenty-four sign, that was a, we were saying that per the ordinance, we, that was, was acceptable. The way that the, the conversation went was, we kept referring to the ordinance, not the fact that we thought four feet was the right answer. So it should, in my opinion, it should be as of the time that the applicant goes to erect this sign, it should be per whatever the ordinance is at that point in time.
Yeah, you, you said, Steve, you said, as, as amended. I think what you should say is, as may be amended in the future.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I, to incur with my fine, fine counsel to the left, yes, I think that's an excellent idea, to not suggest that it's gonna be amended.
Right.
Because it obviously has been amended in the past.
Right.
And no doubt one day will be amended in the future. Everything seems to be.
I can give you the date.
That it'll be amended in the future, huh?
Yes. I can give you the date when it will be amended in the future, I can even tell you what it's gonna say.
Okay, good, alright.
So also...
I wanna make a request for some lottery numbers later, but we'll talk separately.
Also, on page eight, it should be, the date should be updated to March twelfth. Uh, it still says January twenty-third, so it should be the same as the other resolution, since we updated that to today's date as well.
Well, again, now therefore, yeah, yeah, that, that's, yeah, we have moving it, but yeah, that, now therefore, that date should be, uh...
March twelfth.
Right, March twelfth. Well, presumably March twelfth. We haven't gotten there yet.
As of right now, as we're drafting...
Yeah. The last one's gonna be April something, by the way.
Yep.
That's why we leave it blank, usually, I don't know why, this one was a left blank.
So Steve, I think you handled the first...
Issue?
I think we're, we're good with the signage, so then hours.
Well, move, thank you for helping, moving me along.
Is there just one other thing?
Sure.
So, uh, page two, paragraph four, says no interior or exterior improvements are proposed. I think it's based on a signage issue, we just would say currently proposed?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, where exactly is that on page two?
Uh, halfway in the middle of paragraph four, the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth line, in the middle, it says no interior or exterior improvements are proposed.
Are proposed at this time.
Right. Or currently proposed.
Currently proposed, fine, that's fine, yeah.
Just to tie it all back to this conversation.
That's fine, yeah.
I distinctly remember at the last meeting that, that sentence was at issue, and I think originally it said, no improvements are proposed at this time, but the applicant may install a sign at some point in the future, or something to that effect, and that's what, yeah.
Right, so, so kind of putting the...
Right, right.
Yep.
So we can hit again.
There was all...
Currently proposed, okay. Currently proposed is currently proposed, so that's, there we go. Um, as far as the other issue, uh, the, the... My understanding of what the board intended when the board ultimately granted this approval with conditions, clearly, the applicant had mentioned, uh, a present intention of limiting the practice to three evenings and a weekend morning, particularly Saturday morning, uh, and in fact, those original dates were Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, five to eight PM, and Saturday, nine AM to one PM, making it clear it was a, for lack of a better term, part-time venture, and that, I remember distinctly specific testimony regarding if it became more than that, I would go to, I would get a place to do it, so to speak, paraphrasing. Uh, the, the, and, uh, while there was some back and forth with the board members as to whether to impose specific dates and times, or, uh, and when there was, at the decision rendering time, the record reflected that the applicant requested flexibility, and one of the board members requested, maybe we limit it to a certain number of patients a day, or, uh, clients a day, uh, and at some point, there was a maximum of five on any of the days, uh, which was agreed to by the board. It was my understanding, at least, that the board operated with the understanding and expectation that the practice would take place at home, uh, on no more than three evenings and Saturday mornings, and by mornings, I mean till one PM, uh, is what was represented. So while, right now, we have a provision that says the applicant shall be limited to seeing no more than five patients onsite per day, and, uh, no site operation shall be permitted on Sunday, uh, to make it more accurate, my, uh, proposed revision to that condition is as follows. The applicant shall be limited to seeing patients on three evenings with a last appointment no later than eight PM, and Saturday mornings with a last appointment no later than ten, one PM, with no more than five patients onsite each day, and no site operations permitted on Sundays. That captures the, what I understood to be, the intent of the applicant and the intent of the board, and by flexibility, I understood that to mean, don't pin me in on which particular nights, it may be a Monday night, it may be a Tuesday night, it may be a Wednesday night, a Thursday night, a Friday, but it's not gonna be five days a week, uh, or six days a week, uh, full-time, or even five patients a day, six days a week, thirty patients. Uh, I didn't understand the board to make that determination, or, or to determine that it was with that leeway. So that's, um, how I propose to revise that condition number five, to make it more accurately reflect the board's intention when it rendered its decision. As always, the board members who voted in the majority tell us if we got it right or wrong, and if wrong, let's get it right.
Any comments from those who voted for this application?
Could you read five again? Is this the correct copy I have? I don't know if this is the updated copy.
No, it's not updated, so, uh, that's, that's, I'm adding some of this language right now, so I'll go through it again.
That's what I wanna hear.
The applicant shall be limited to seeing patients on three, um, I should say, weeknights.
If you could just refer, just make sure we're clear, what section and page you're referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is condition number five, so it's on page eight, in the condition section, uh, number five. Uh, the applicant shall be limited to seeing patients on three weeknights with a last appointment no later than eight PM, uh, ending no later than eight PM, and Saturday mornings with last, with a last appointment ending no later than ten PM, excuse me, one PM, with no more than five patients onsite each day, and no onsite operation shall be permitted on Sundays. This would conceivably, uh, lead to the potential of as many as twenty patients, spread out over three weeknights and Saturday mornings, uh, yet there would be nothing on Sundays, uh, and it wouldn't be beyond that, uh, which I think would be not only consistent with the testimony of the applicant, but again, as I understood the intention of the board when it granted this home office use with conditions.
So, two questions. One is, uh, is there, should there be something that says how that is, um, who oversees to make sure that there are no more than those number of, it, like a reference to somewhere else in the code that we have for the town?
That's...
Or is that just assumed?
That's compliance, and the board didn't, uh, I don't, if I recall correctly, uh, I did not impose any specific reporting, uh, with respect to number of visits.
No, and that's not, and I'm not saying that there should be additional, I'm saying what is, what would be right now, right? So what is in the code to say that, uh, what, what mechanisms does the town have to make sure that the, what is inside the resolution is adhered to?
Right. That, that's, that's, uh, in general, uh, uh, when people see physical changes, structures, et cetera, not located where it's supposed to be, what have you, uh, you know, that happens often in a sort of a passive way, when inspectors come to look at one thing, they see something else often, in my experience, um, or there's neighbors, you know, who...
Sure.
Bring it to the attention of the administration or the staff. Um, here, it's something internal, it's much more difficult, um, it would probably be neighbors, uh, indicating, uh, we're seeing cars that appear to be patients coming outside of the designated timeframes, or, you know, ten a day, or six days a week, or what have you, uh, and then that would prompt...
I can't see that happening in Long Hill.
Well, it, compliance is one of the most difficult things in any municipality, especially when you're talking about something internal, if it were, you know, I've dealt, dealt with restaurant, things where there's all kinds of sophisticated reporting and looking at the slips and this, that, and the other.
Sure.
Uh, and computerized data and what have you, um, uh, here, I don't know what more the board could have come up with beyond, uh, neighbors reporting.
And just to interject, I, I just think that we'll see the impact very quickly on this particular neighborhood if there's non-compliance with these things, and...
That's fair, it's just, I was wondering, to Dennis's point, if someone picks this up in ten years, right? And those neighbors have moved out, that, that it's previously spoken, and there's other neighbors coming in, and they're looking at it, there, there, you lose that history of it, so is there a way to codify that? That was my, my, and I understand that if there's not a, an active way, that it's more of a passive portion where it's assumed that it will be done. The other question is on the previous page, page seven.
And I'm, sorry, but I have to say, the board had the opportunity, I raised it, and the board chose not to require a deed restriction, which would have these conditions in the record, so that would have provided any purchasers with formal notice, uh, uh, prior to purchasing.
Absolutely, yep.
That, you know, that we don't have either.
And then just one other thing, on page seven, uh, paragraph twenty-five, about halfway through, it says, additionally, the board finds that the proposal would provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for a commercial use. Should it be home office use rather than commercial use?
Yeah, commercial use is an overstatement, in my opinion.
Right, because there's no mention of it earlier, and that would tie out to the paragraph on page, um, two in section four, the very start of it, where you referenced home office.
Yeah, in fact, I would suggest, uh, that the board were acceptable, or amenable, uh, an appropriate location for a permitted home office.
Yep.
Use. But yes, thank you. And a period at the end of paragraph twenty-six.
Back, another question about the hours. The way you had it worded, you said, three weeknights, no later than eight o'clock, and what time does a weeknight start?
He...
[inaudible].
Uh, just, and I'm sorry, my, my apologies, Mr. Chairman, because as part of the predicate, I should have explained the process, um, but the process is the clear, the clearing. The hearing was closed a couple of months ago, actually, I think, almost, but, uh, um, but this is just for the board to make a determination, or frankly, to get a resolution that accurately memorializes this, the decision it rendered back in, I guess it was late, January twenty-fourth, I guess, um, so...
My concern is if a weeknight starts at six o'clock, and you're saying you can go to six to eight, that's basically two appointments, we're contradicting ourselves.
We, we can say five PM, uh, we, you know, you can...
We can determine the bracket of what we're...
You can determine the bracket if you want it to be clear.
Right, that's why I think it shouldn't be weeknight, it should have...
Weekday?
Week.
Just call it weekday?
Well...
Weekdays, I mean, he's not gonna be there at ten o'clock in the morning, no later than, uh, yeah.
But if, but if you're also saying no later than ten PM...
They're eight PM.
Eight PM.
That's if a weeknight starts at six, that's only two hours.
Right, but let's say no, no than eight PM on a weekday, that kind of implies the entire, entirety of the twenty-four hour span.
No, no, I think, I think, I think, if I understood correctly, the initial was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, five to eight, and Saturday, nine to one, uh, and then there was a request to not, to be, for the board to be flexible on that, which I understood to mean, you know, not necessarily pick the nights, you know, uh, you know, let, allow there to be that kind of flexibility, so...
So the hours that, as we understood in testimony, were between the hours of five in the afternoon and eight PM?
And, and nine to one, I mean, that's what was proffered, and it was proffered as a, in essence, a part-time...
Yes.
Uh, you know, after regular business hours, and on the Saturday mornings, and if I, if it grew, uh, I'd go get my own place, and I'm paraphrasing, I don't mean to be, to suggest that was exactly how it was said, it was, but, but I'm paraphrasing.
Just, just in the spirit of, of being somewhat, uh, uh, understanding, right, of, you know, we went to, originally, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, then it became choose your nights, as long as it's three, right? I mean, I think my recollection, and maybe, it may be flawed, right, is that there would, there was also some, um, flexibility in the time, so, you know, maybe if we gave a four o'clock delay, that could get some flexibility there.
Again, I, I, we wanna get what the board meant when the board did it.
Right.
You tell me what the board meant.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of in my mind.
No, I agree with Brendan.
Yeah, because what we're really trying to define is the weekday, and the weekday wasn't to include the entire day.
Right.
Right? That was the intent of testimony. That was the intent of testimony, so.
Right, right.
I'm fine with 4 p.m. or being a little bit looser on that, so it's a four-hour window, essentially.
Okay, so we have it now. The applicant shall be limited to seeing patients on three weekday evenings with a.
No, I'm sorry, just to explain, we're not trying to be obstinate, but we've closed testimony, if we allow you to testify, we'll have to reopen testimony, and I don't know if you really wanna do that, so we need to wrestle with this, I appreciate.
And, and the decision was already rendered, if you don't like the ultimate decision, you could appeal. They, it was a grant of the approval of the home office use, they, but we can't, the board can't take any further questions or comment.
Do we want to make a difference in time?
From anybody. Your interpretation, it's the board's decision, it's not your interpretation, it's the board's decision that we have to memorialize in the resolution. So, let me put it a little clearer, the chairman is telling you no, okay? The, and there's a legal reason for that, too, but most people generally don't care about the legal reason, but they understand what yes and no means. The, the, the applicant shall be limited to seeing patients on three weeknights with a starting time of no earlier than 4 p.m. and a finishing time, or last appointment ending at no later than 8 p.m., and Saturday mornings with a starting time of no earlier than 9 a.m. and an ending time of no later than 1 p.m., with no more than five patients onsite on each day, and no onsite operation shall be permitted on Sundays. Is that an accurate reflection of what the board intended when it granted the approval with conditions?
Any objections to that characterization? Okay.
Okay, so we have that changed, we have the additional condition I read once or twice about the signage, that we modified to keep it just straight to the ordinance, as may be amended in the future, and we'll get, whatever date it's adopted on, we'll put that date in that paragraph on page eight, we got a period at the end of paragraph 26.
So, just one other.
Sure.
Thing that we talked about.
Currently proposed on page two, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One other thing that we talked about was licensing, that they have, that the acupuncturists had to be licensed. Should that also be one of the stipulations?
As I recall, it was discussed, but we, I, we tried to get, to give us conditions at the time, and you gave us some, and you didn't give us others.
Well, I recall the applicant produced his license.
Correct. My recollection from looking at the tape more times than I care to count was that Mr. Portera represented that his credentials would be available online.
Oh, that's right.
For inspection, and for that reason, at least my understanding was that's why the board didn't bring that up as a possible condition.
Okay.
Because it was already there.
That's right, that's right.
Yep, yep, okay. Any other comments on this draft? I mean, clearly, we need to redraft this before we vote.
I mean, do we?
It's up to the board members.
I mean, I think we've made more significant adjustments in the previous application, and there is some wording, I mean, as long as we're conceptually okay with.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I am.
What's up, Dennis?
There was a discussion about 15 minutes ago about no interior or exterior improvements. I'm scanning, and I can't find that, can someone point me to it?
The paragraph inside, Dennis? Page two, for, section four, right in the middle, the sixth line, it's halfway through that sixth line.
Okay, that's in the.
Finding section.
Yeah, but that's not, the decision does not speak to that issue.
The, it's not, it's not a condition of approval because it was the application as proposed. The board did not say he can't make any improvements in his home, it's a good, so that's why it's not a condition of approval.
Yeah, I'm, I am content that it is not mentioned later.
Oh.
As part of the findings, this is a, because clearly there will be unrelated improvements.
Right.
I mean, if he needs a new hot water heater, he's gotta get permits for that, and it's got nothing to do with this, so, so we don't wanna restrict him in any way.
Right, correct.
Well, if, if the board's comfortable in, in moving forward with the amendments as noted and.
I mean, I am, I mean, I could, I could vote on this, but.
Anybody else voice any opposition to voting on the changes that have been made to this resolution with the understanding that they'll be made?
Voting, can I, no, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Tony, are you good?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Then we do need formally a motion, a second, a roll call vote of the four board members for adoption.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion, still moved.
Second.
Mr. Malinowski, second?
Yes.
Committee Ray, Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Sorry, I put a mint in my mouth before.
We caught you by surprise.
Yeah, Mr. Alkala?
Yes.
And Chairman Richter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, hopefully, as soon as tomorrow, this will be.
Good, so I can.
Exactly, back over to Deborah, and perhaps also the other one as well, but then that one can be slated for next meeting adoption.
It will be, it will be revised expeditiously.
Okay, great, so the next item, just any old new business, I just really had more of an announcement to the committee members, at our next meeting, I would like the committee team leaders to just come back with a scope, set of priorities and some milestones for their teams, and scope for some of the committees is more important, I'm thinking of site plan approval, we talked about that, or the site plan review type committee as far as putting some guidance in regards to how that will be carried out, now that we're revamping that, and so if you could get back, again, by the next meeting with, again, scope, priorities and milestones, that would be most helpful as we get into the new year. Is there any other old or new business anybody wants to bring before us? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.